Followed immediately by the city council meeting for Wednesday, October 19th. We have approval of minutes. Report of first ones by city clerk, report of business from council president, no public hearings. Ordinances on second reading, one, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10. Two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10. Three, an ordinance of the city of New Brunswick appropriating $2 million for homeowner affordable rehabilitation program. Nothing on first reading. Resolutions, one, approve agenda amendments, two, approve payroll, three, authorize refunds for the green tax sales certificates, four, approve request for solicitation of funds from the Salvation Army, five, approve request for street closing, six, authorize sale of surplus city real property, seven, approve amendment of resolution order 72237 for capital paving, eight and nine, a release of site performance guaranteed, ten, authorize purchase by police department from Micro Strategies, eleven and twelve, release of coffee machines, thirteen, authorize refund to Rutgers for property exemption overpayment, fourteen, approved authorization to rebid for UEZ Zone administrative consultant, fifteen, authorize execution of professional service contract with C, G, P and H. Sixteen, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance for maximum frame, seventeen, approve amendment of resolution order 122138 with Roberts Engineering, eighteen through twenty-one, our relaxation of city noise ordinance or use of city property thereof, twenty-two and twenty-three, approval of additional funding for Montana construction, twenty-four, approve lease of coffee machine, twenty-five, relaxation of city noise ordinance. Now we have items for discussion by council, public comment. The next meeting will be Wednesday, November 2nd at 5:30 PM. The meeting will now come to order. Will you please call it off?
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Egan?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Council vice president Escobar?
Here.
Council president Socorah Ludwig?
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on inappropriate bulletin board and posted in the bag vestibule of City Hall, visible to the public throughout through the windows and lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely the home newspaper. Please stand for the plate card.
I applaud the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and endless justice for all.
Please remain standing in the moment of silence for all those suffering around the world and all those protecting us every day. Thank you.
Motion to accept the minutes, please second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council vice president Escobar?
Yes.
Council president Socorah Ludwig?
Yes. My clerk has, of course, long since directed to the appropriate departments.
Yes, council president, the correspondence received by the city clerk's office have been forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. I have a few comments I want to make tonight regarding the public comment that was made at the last minute, at the last meeting. First, Rutgers University Police Department is a fully empowered law enforcement entity under state law with statewide jurisdiction. Next, I was asked about two incidents that were not reported. The process of the city is that the city will not act without the information be embedded by and supplied by the BPD or the prosecutor's office, who goes through information on a case by case basis. There is no manipulation of the facts in these instances, but each one may warrant a different approach to report. Next, there was a concern of medical waste, and I haven't informed that the Department of Health for the state of New Jersey has investigated those allegations that earlier this year, Robert W. Johnson University Hospital disposed of medical waste through city trash. The investigation concluded there was no such incident and that the hospital, in fact, separates the medical waste from the regular trash in the city of New Brunswick. And those are the only comments I have tonight. We have no public hearings. Second reading, one, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.20, Handicap Parking, Section 10.20.010, Schedule 39 Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, Add 78 True Avenue, 156 Street, 19 Oak Street. We're prepared to open it up to the public at this point. If there's anyone who'd like to comment on this ordinance only, please step forward and state your name when you address the council. Seeing none?
Move the ordinance, second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council vice president Escobar?
Yes.
Council president Socorah Ludwig?
Yes. Two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.12 Traffic Control Regulations, Section 10.12.100, Schedule 11 Bus Stops, Add Along New Street Northbound on the East Early Side. Again, I'll open it up to the public. If anybody would like to comment on this ordinance only, one time up, five minutes. Please state your name when you address the council.
Good evening, members of council. Charlie Cradaville, New Brunswick. I wanted to ask about what routes stop at this bus stop? Is this a Rutgers bus stop or NJ Transit or something else?
It's my understanding that this was a request made by Rutgers to institutionalize a bus stop, and it was made over, and we're just putting it out right now.
Got it. So this would be near the George?
Mr. Valenti? Yes.
That is correct. Just south of the little cutout on New Street from George, yes.
Great. And do you know if Rutgers is going to install a shelter to protect people in this location?
I have no indication from Mr. Wong, who is the director of planning for Rutgers, who requested the installation.
Right. I certainly hope they will, and yeah, just wanted to take this opportunity to thank everybody in the city, county and NJ Transit, who helped to get those other bus shelters installed recently. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville.
Hi. Yes, Daniel Moore Somerset Street. If I'm understanding correctly, this is with the, because I know it's a bus stop on New Street coming off of George Street due to where I'd be down there. So are you saying, what, are you going to put a bus, a sign there? What is the difference that I'm trying to understand due to where it's already a bus stop right there?
Mr. Valenti?
No, no, no. There is a pull-up, very short distance. That was intended, when the George built, to be used as to collect their garbage, so they weren't blocking New Street. This is just downhill from that location, and Rutgers has already installed the Rutgers bus stop sign right there. So it's visible as if you go there today.
So the cutout is going to be come with toll plus toll?
No, it's further downhill from the cutout. The existing cutout is strictly for the garbage services from the George to keep it off the street. Thank you.
Okay. Like I said, I know it was already a bus stop down there. I was just, that's why I was just checking what was going to be the difference, even though honestly I say it's a bad location as you're turning the corner off of there due to where the buses are holding up all the traffic there, where that's another thing to look in due to where I just have to say honestly, that's not a good spot for a bus stop to be right off a curb coming there, where you're blocking two ways. So I hope someone does look into the safety issues due to where, like I say, I am down there very frequently in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Does anyone else care to comment on this ordinance? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance, second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council vice president Escobar?
Yes.
Council president Socorah Ludwig?
Yes. Three, an ordinance of the city of New Brunswick appropriating $2 million from regional contribution funds received from the townships of Piscataway and North Brunswick in order to provide funding for the homeowner affordable rehabilitation program. Again, I'll open it up to the public, one time up, five minutes. Please state your name once again.
Good evening, once again, Charlie Cradaville, New Brunswick. I'd like to ask, first of all, who this program will benefit? Is it only owner occupied households?
I understand it's owner occupied of 22 family low income.
Right. Okay. And I'd like to ask, because I was there the day that regional contribution agreements were done away with. That was in the Corzine administration, I believe, 2009. When did the city receive these funds, $2 million, from Piscataway and North Brunswick?
These funds would have been received prior to the disbandment of the Mount to Hold Program, but we're still able to use these funds for the particular areas, and we do have to enact it for a normal way.
So would it be fair to say the city has been sitting on $2 million to benefit low-income homeowners since 2009?
No, because we've had money in the fund that we were able to use, and now we're replenishing it with this.
Okay.
But it is sitting, it is sitting in a bank that an administrator oversees, and it does collect interest.
Okay. So the city's had this $2 million for over a decade and hasn't spent it yet, and now you're poised to spend it?
Yes.
Okay. Any reason that it wasn't spent sooner? You know, there's, obviously, this isn't the only thing you can do with it. You could be producing new housing?
Well, that entails a whole different process if we want to do new housing, if those sort of DCA, if I'm correct, and there's a bunch of different approvals that we have to get for that. But, Mr. Dominguez, is there anything you'd like to add to it?
Certainly. So the city is exploring avenues to utilize funds in that way for new construction and affordable housing. When we got these funds originally, and then when our state was done with, the program that we had at the time was for affordable housing rehabilitation for single and two-family owner occupies, which is a typical program that many cities and towns have. And then as COA was expanded into the Christie administration, it became more complicated to amend the program to do other things with the funds. So at this point, we have been doing diligently those rehabilitations as people have applied for them. We've been getting about a half dozen or so applications every year, and we've been processing them, and so there hasn't been, this is the time now where we move these funds into activity to replenish the fund to continue doing that while on the side in parallel, we work with Fair Share, DCA, et cetera, in order to be able to deploy some of the rest of these funds for other purposes. But for right now, since the last thing that we approved for before COA was disbanded was for just the affordable, single and two-family, low to moderate income rehabilitation, that's the only thing that at this moment we can use these funds for.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez.
Thank you for the thorough answer. And just to be clear, is this the last of the RCA funds, or are there other RCA funds the city is sitting on?
I believe there are other funds. There's more.
Wow. How much more, if I may ask?
I believe that the total is a hair over 4.5 billion.
Wow.
I think there's a lot that could be done with that. We are in a housing crisis, and I understand it may require a lot of work to jump through the hoops that, you know, the folks in Tretton have created, but, you know, I was shocked to see this on the agenda today, that RCA funds are still in the city's coffers, haven't been spent yet. We need to move quickly to build affordable housing for low and moderate income families, and it seems like, you know, that's not happening fast enough here. For instance, the Hoffman Pavilion was torn down in 2010, supposed to be replaced very quickly, building that served, you know, 60-plus senior citizens. It's a piece of flat land today, and, you know, the developer that the housing authority chose and gave a $1.9 million loan that became a gift to is saying that they won't even be able to get that project done until 2024 now. So, you know, we don't have much more affordable housing than we did when the RCA agreements were ended, and I think it's a shame that the city hasn't done more to use the funds more quickly. It's really unfortunate, especially when we see how much luxury, expensive, overpriced, unaffordable housing the city has pushed through and rushed through. I'd like to see that same energy, that same zeal to get us affordable housing that the people of New Brunswick can actually afford, and I would encourage you to use the 4.5 billion to build that ASAP.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville. And I guess it just states that we are looking into other avenues to use.
If I may?
Of course.
I tried to add to Mr. Cradaville's point. We are actually, and have been for months now, if not into some point last year, been working diligently with the Fair Share folks at DCA to actually deploy some of these funds toward the Hoffman Pavilion specifically. So we are in the pipeline to try to deploy those funds into projects that are, have approvals and are moving forward in the city.
Thank you. I'll go next, please.
Yes, Daniel Moore. Actually, can you tell me, is there a date that you received this?
I don't know the date.
Was it the date, what year then, what month, month and year then, when this was received?
Yeah, I'm not sure we could possibly.
Before COVID? The COVID started, or?
Absolutely before COVID, because the coronavirus stands.
Then, well, all the people that's been needing help, I don't see why this wasn't used, and you're still hanging on to it, due to where people were out of work, didn't have funds.
You have to understand that certain things can only be applied to different assets of the city. You can't just take money from places, and even though it would be nice to be able to utilize them in certain areas where there's a need, there are different funds that you can only do certain things with and certain approval processes that you have to go through in order to spend that money, and thus, we are working towards all that. This is helpful movement, you know, towards the one fund now, and then the other funds we are looking into how we can appropriate them in a different manner.
Okay. My other question is, when I heard you say low income, what is the wage due to where you call low income? What, how much, how much does a person have to really make, be in range of, for you to call a low income to qualify for this?
Mr. Dominguez, you know that's bigger.
The specific numbers, no, but it's a number that's adjusted every year by the state and is determined based on family size and based on area median income and then adjusted from there forward. It's usually between 0 to 80% of area median income.
Because like I told you, even with the apartment situation, that's the big thing due to where, and like I said, I hope you understand me when I say, say, "due to where", how certain things where it's based on how you make, due to where, like I say, I will say, for example, take me, "do to where what? I'm disabled, I'm on disability." How, what, one moment you do to where, what, you would think that, ooh, I'm low income, then what, would I qualify, then I apply for things, due to where, wow, do they consider me that I'm low income, due to where I get above? So like I said, what I'm trying to just, where I think that needs to be notified to the public, like I said, what, and not announce, what is, what do you consider low income? And I surely would like, maybe another day, not now, to get some information on what are you considering as low income under this? Maybe Mr. Dominguez can hand me the paperwork.
I'm sure, I'm sure once we get, I mean, everything that's adjusted through the state, Mr. Dominguez would be happy to supply that information.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to add, Mr. Daniel, that if you look in the state, you know, there is some guidelines, because the state is the one that put those guidelines, right? If you're looking there, you will see different guidelines for low, for moderate, for high income. So if you could look at it in.
I understand what you're saying.
Right, but they are adjusted.
I understand what you're saying, but due to a certain things program, due to where, for example, I would say, okay, how they'll tell you, free government, the government pays for free cell phones, free this now, due to if you're on disability, then, ooh, you would qualify this. And like I said, once I showed that I'm on disability and show how much I really receive, due to where I don't qualify for that, so it's not matching with what the state is saying, if you understand.
The best for you to take is, like I said before.
That's what I was just trying to prove the difference.
Exactly what has to happen for you to do.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this ordinance? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance, second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council vice president Escobar?
Yes.
Council president Socorah Ludwig?
Yes. Next, we have resolutions. If anybody would like to speak on these, please step forward, state your name. You have one time up, on the resolutions only. The progress.
Good evening, Charlie Cradaville, once again, New Brunswick. I'd like to ask about Resolution 6 on page 2, the sale of surplus real property. It looks like you've got about five undersized lots that the city owns, and you're going to auction them off to the highest bidder. What prompted this decision and why not do something like, you know, assign those lots to the housing authority to develop affordable housing?
I believe they have to be offered by statute. That's the, you have to take, and no one came out for the last option, is that correct?
Correct. They're undersized, unapproved lots that have to be offered to adjoining property owners legally before we can sell them at large to the general public.
And has that been done?
That's this process.
So you're going to first offer them to adjoining property owners? And there's really no mechanism by which you could empower the housing authority or transfer them to one of the city's autonomous authorities?
It's not a response to that, but it does cover that some of these properties have very irregular sizing. One of them is 7 feet wide, another one is a triangle on Somerset Street. Basically, these lots are buying large, not easily developable or developable at all. So any loss of housing authority under any mechanism might not actually render any productivity whatsoever.
Thank you. But to our, that's our business.
The council bottom line is that we work with the Georgia Department.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Okay, yeah, thank you for the thorough answers. I don't think I have anything else to say on the resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville. Next speaker, please.
I'm going to be asking about 1010, due to where I was asking you regards to Rutgers situation, and now that you're telling me that Rutgers is higher than considered state police. I see this is basically with radio communication equipment, and like I said, if Rutgers is higher than New Brunswick Police Department, then like I said, please tell me why New Brunswick Police Department and Rutgers does not share the same police radios?
I didn't say they were higher, I said they had a different jurisdiction, or it's a big difference between the two statements.
Well, okay, excuse me, I know statewide or something you were saying, but still, my point is, and like I said, to see this as a resolution for radio communication equipment due to where, please tell me why New Brunswick, if Rutgers is the 911 station and 745-5200, please tell me why they do not share the same radios, because as I told you for the last month, it is getting too much, it's calling too much and too long for someone to, for ambulance or police department to respond, where what, they take it, then they got to transfer it another way, please, and then I would tell you another situation that happened regards, and to, and I would say thank you to Sergeant Dalton for being a witness on this, due to where, wow, how I went to the police station to ask about, what was the call that, over on Jones Avenue? Then he said, I didn't get, we didn't get a call. So like I said, does Rutgers have, and that's why I asked you, does Rutgers have the choose to take a call or call it to New Brunswick? Where he didn't believe me until I showed him the video and showed it was Rutgers police there, how one moment I'm showing that, saying that, ooh, Rutgers can only be on campus. So like I said, it's a big, huge problem with this, with, like I said, the police radios with Rutgers and New Brunswick, due to where, what, Rutgers having the choice whether they respond to it or does New Brunswick respond to it? Is everything reported to New Brunswick Police Department from Rutgers? No, it's not.
As for this resolution, I don't believe it's associated with the 911 equipment and the shared service agreement. I believe this is equipment that our officers need with their own radios and equipment that they need in the offices and the software, and the companies that, is that correct, ma'am? Deputy Director?
That's right. The DVR recorder is a backup system that records all the audio that is transmitted via telephone or radio as a backup.
So, okay, so, okay, now you're saying that this is recording, so you're saying basically, what I know is true already, too, you're saying this is recording for all phone calls and everything, or that goes through the police department at Rutgers?
Not all, not all.
Well, okay, then thank you, if you really have that, and that's for recording, please, I guarantee you, and like I've been telling you, please, I hope you do go over these calls with 911, 745-5200, because like I said, it should not take no 25 minutes, the 30 minutes where ambulance or a police officer to come, what, not even a few blocks away. I don't think any of you are taking me seriously when I say, wow, due to where, what, I lost a neighbor last month, where what, then I was speaking in traffic authority, due to where the engineer, he's not here tonight, going to tell me this does have nothing to do with traffic. It has a lot to do with it, due to where, what, going to the wrong locations, what, the police department and the ambulance. So like I said, please, like I said, I hope you really take me serious until when I say something needs to be done by, with this radio situation between Rutgers and New Brunswick Police Department, due to where, like I said, everything that Rutgers is not transferring over to New Brunswick Police Department. And wow, is that, could that be another reason, even though I know the crime isn't down, but is everything being reported? No, it's not. And like I said, Sergeant Dalton was the witness, due to where he looked it up on record to show that nothing was there, but when I showed him the video camera, then that's when he went back to Rutgers and showed him, yes, something, the police were there. So like I said, something's not working out right, and I pray that, wow, that all of you really take me serious, especially as a person, come on, 911, 745-5200 needs to go back to New Brunswick Police Department. Thank you.
Do you have any other resolutions? Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment on the resolutions? Seeing none?
Move the resolutions, second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council vice president Escobar?
Yes.
Council president Socorah Ludwig?
Yes. I just have something I'd like to address outside of business, that we're coming into the cold time of the year, and we do have a pervasive hunger issue, and anybody who can find it in their heart to supply our food banks and our soup kitchens with either their time or material or money, I think it would be greatly appreciated for the community. Council vice president Escobar, do you have any comments?
No comments, please. Thank you.
Councilman Anderson? Councilman Egan?
No.
Councilman Fleming?
No.
Okay. Now we'll move on to the public portion of the meeting, public comment portion. Again, you have five minutes, one time up, public comment only, it's not an answer session. Please step forward, state your name.
Yes, Daniel Moore. First, I would say to Councilmember Fleming, I will say, let the Lord send you a blessing for you to have courage last week. My mind was on 911 at the last meeting, but I will say, bless you for having the courage to speak up about breast cancer, because it is very serious. So I'm sorry for your sister's loss, but like I said, I will say bless you for speaking up as a man and telling a people how serious it is, and I know, due to where my mom is going through the treatments as well. So like I said, may the Lord bless you for having the courage to speak up, to tell women that, like I said, breast cancer is very serious. Now, the next thing I would like to speak on, due to where, like I said, come on, something has to be done with this 911 system, 745-5200, and like I said, due to where, out of all people, people, due to where, what I've proven to you, the police department and you, due to where, the things that I do see, and like I said, it's for a reason, because I'm the one to speak up about it. And like I said, due to where, calling in so many times, I don't even dial those numbers. I just call 745-5226, because it just extremely takes too long, and I, like I said, I hope you take me seriously. And then one thing, I'm going to go towards the mayor. I don't like, due to where, how all this is going, due to where I feel that people are not being treated equal. If you cannot treat somebody equal, then I say you don't belong on this earth. And like I said, do I, as a black person, 45, that I've been here all my life, do I see racism with the mayor and the police department? Yes, I do. And like I said, wow, you do it in one area, please do it in the other. Just, well, you evacuated all the homeless from Pittman Park, why are the homeless allowed to sleep in the park on Harvey Street? And then, like I said, looking at all this stuff that the mayor, no disrespect, like I said, I've got many Latino friends and Hispanic, born and raised, basically, what, whole tire friend street knows me more than any of you and the mayor, but due to where, come on, and seeing that, due to where, he's giving out IDs to illegals, due to where, come on, something is not right. Like I said, what was then done back then, and now, same people, same same laws, come on, it's not being treated fair. We weren't able to do it, why are they able to do it? And like I told you, same thing, due to where, wow, you give me a ticket for being in park after hours, well, what, what? Just calling an ambulance for a man on the ground, but wow, you won't give them tickets for being in park after hours? Please, like I said, pure racism. And like I said, wow, you can't treat people equal, you don't belong on this earth. And yet, like I said, and I say it again, due to where, come on, do I see a racial thing with New Brunswick Police Department and the mayor, after all the things, and due to where he's really going to create hate, how he's advertising all of this, what? One moment with Latino, Hispanic, and Black, the way he's doing this to trying to represent him, and a person out on the street, and I'm getting a lot of messages back saying, wow, what is this mayor doing? And like I said, due to where, I just got a message sent to me earlier, wow, Mayor Cahill allows undocumented immigrants, where he gives them IDs? So, so like I said, what, are you telling me, wow, just because someone can be illegal, is that why New Brunswick Police Department doesn't arrest somebody on that side, give them tickets? Wow, you arrested a man on the corner of Rimson and Seamen who are exposing themselves? Wow, did you arrest a man over there for touching women over there? No, like I said, please. Like I said, each one of these, like I said, will have their day, but like I said, am I happy with New Brunswick racism? No, I am not. Like I said, we weren't allowed to do things growing up in New Brunswick, why are they allowed to do it? Because it's the mayor, and like I said, Captain J.T. Miller and Kokudo and this part of this council who allows it. But something is going to have to be done, I tell you. It's not just me, buying your on Facebook, due to where you see the remarks coming up. It's really going to create a lot of hate, and it's already in New Jersey, but we don't need that. Like I said, I'm a person where we work together, no matter what race or create, create or color, we need each other. But is the mayor thinking like that? No, he's not. And please, I hope to see some change, due to where, most definitely with New Brunswick Police Department. Stop judging people by the color of their skin. If it's the law, it's the law. Whether they're legal or illegal, please, why are they allowed to do it? And what, a black person isn't? And like I said, Captain, yeah, he's smiling because he know what I'm telling, telling the truth. You're smiling about it, just like how Choco Donald smiled that day before. Oh, you're going to get, you're going to learn a lesson for smiling at me.
Thank you for your comments. I'll have the next speaker, please.
I need to talk, make some comments about what Joe, what Ms. Moore said. Joe says you're saying that racism shouldn't be allowed, the city's not giving IDs to undocumented. The city's giving municipal IDs to all the residents that live in New Brunswick. And since we are not racist, right, we are trying to treat everybody fairly, these are people that need an ID. There was a need from the community, and the city decided, like any other cities that have been doing it, to address a situation. So we are open, it's because we don't want to be racist, right? We want to be all working together. So we're working together, and we're just doing that for the community, a segment of the community that needed our need. But that's, you know, and they are undocumented, they're not illegals. The other thing is that, in terms of Harvey, I understand, because I have heard many complaints that homeless are in Harvey, they didn't tell me ethnicity of those who were there, but I am very aware that the New Brunswick Police Department has been addressing the challenges at Harvey Park. So that it might be recurrent, that's something else, that they go back, but they are happy, like in any other city, you move them in all the areas of the city, they move back again, even if they get a ticket. So I am not saying that what you're saying is untrue, but I'm just, we have to be fair, right? I know for sure, I know, I am directly aware that they have been patrolling, and they have been at Harvey Street dealing with the homeless population. I said that this is disrupting the product, right? The seniors cannot use it, the children cannot use the football field. So that has been addressed, and I believe that's ongoing. So we're trying like any other, you know, we are different, we have different ethnicities, diverse, and we're trying to do, I think that we had done a pretty good job in trying to address some of the challenges that each group experiences. Are we perfect? No. But I take a little bit of offense when you say that we're giving illegals, you know, IDs, when we are giving all residents of New Brunswick that they need an ID, so they could, are able to conduct business in the city and beyond. Thank you.
Ms. Moore, I will have a response for your comments this evening at the next meeting. I need to get a pause.
Oh, and I will continue my story as well to you, Escobar.
Thank you. I'll have the next speaker now, please.
The FBI was here for him, Mayor Cahill, women at the police department, now.
I'll have the next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Alexandra Harris, 47 East Cup Street, Saraville, New Jersey. Actually, the borough that I serve as an environmental commissioner, but I'm here speaking as a member of the public with concern. Also, a student of Rutgers, New Brunswick, I study environmental policy, institutions and behavior. So although I don't have a degree yet, I feel like I have more of the education or sense of what's going on. I would like to reference the comments that were made in the last city council meeting, referencing the resolution, the recommendations sent over from the New Brunswick Environmental Commission. I may be paraphrasing, but more or less it was referenced as words coming from private interest, and that you don't have the professionals speaking on this behalf. Again, the resolution is a stance against the Woodbridge Gas Power Plant proposal, particularly in the K B section. And I just wanted to say that you do have professionals available at your disposal to help you get a better understanding on what's going on, the specifics, the air pollutants. I know this information has been shared to you, the same information that's been shared to the public in Saraville, and also the environmental commissions across many municipalities. And it is something to be concerned with, because this does affect the air quality, the public safety, and the welfare of the community of New Brunswick, as well as Ford, North Brunswick, East Brunswick, Perthamboy, Saraville, and the list goes on. So it is something that you can make a decision. You are here spending your time, I thank you for spending your evening here with the public and trying to serve the public, but you do have the power to make a stance against this. Again, if you don't know off the top of your head, some of the air pollutants that would be emitted from this, or with the air permit, would be 126 tons of ammonia, 110s of carbon monoxide, and it's just, why are we allowing another municipality to go through with this? Like, also, I just want to add that, it just confuses me why we can just say that there's no one talking about it, because there are. Again, I just want to point out that it's not your private interest. This is somebody from New Brunswick. Your advisory board, the environmental commission, sent this resolution over to you. So I don't think that's something that you can just negate or skip over. I do believe, I strongly believe, that if you do the research on your own, or you hear out what your environmental commission has to say about this, that you will most likely come to the same agreement, that this Woodbridge Power Plant cannot go through. And one of the steps to making sure that doesn't happen is taking a stance alongside the other seven municipalities that said no to this. So, yeah, so thank you for your time, and I hope you reconsider revisiting that resolution and discuss that as a city council at the next meeting.
Thank you for your comments. I'll have the next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Anderson Adiyelu at 88 Gilvin Street here in New Brunswick. With the overturning of Roe v. Wade, there has been countless rallies across the city of New Brunswick. We're here in support of reproductive rights alongside many notable nonprofits. We actually just had one last Saturday with Planned Parenthood, Our Revolution, and Are You Progressives? Does the city council have a stance on abortion rights? Do you support abortion rights?
This is a comments section only. Please continue with your comments.
Okay. Well, I just want to know your opinion. You know, last Saturday, we were looking for support from city officials, and couldn't really find too many of them. And so it's definitely an important issue that affects residents of New Jersey and countless others, especially marginalized communities who don't have access to abortion rights like other communities. And so, you know, it's important that we know where our city officials stand on this issue. And I know this is a public comments section, but going forward, I would like an answer. Thank you so much. I yield my time.
Thank you. I'll have the next speaker, please.
Good evening once again. Charlie Cradville, New Brunswick. I do want to follow up on the last speaker. I had the privilege of being at the rally on Saturday, and I learned some disturbing information, actually, that, you know, Planned Parenthood is being pushed out of the city, and is going to relocate outside New Brunswick. And, yeah, I feel like the city's leaders should be loud and clear about their position. I was curious if anybody knows the mayor's position on abortion rights.
You would have to ask the mayor, but this is not, no, this is for your comment only. This is not a question.
Yeah, where can I find the mayor to ask him?
The way you've been conducting these meetings, and we're going to continue to do that.
Yeah, obviously, the mayor hasn't been here in 10 years. When I do track the mayor down, he refuses to answer any questions about government or policy. So realistically, how am I supposed to get that answer?
You'll have to continue to try to ask him, or none of us can give you what his opinion is, first of all, and that's all I'm going to say about that.
Okay. Well, I think the people in New Brunswick deserve to know, and would encourage you to ask him, since I would hope you would want to know too. But I have to follow up on some of your comments, Madam President. At the beginning of the meeting, you said that there was a DOH investigation into the allegations that regulated medical waste was hauled from Robert Wood Johnson to the Middlesex County landfill. I'm curious what your source is on that.
I gave my statement, I don't think the source is relevant. There was an investigation, those were the findings, that's the only answer. And again, please continue with your comments.
I'm just curious where you learned that? How did you learn that? I'd like to verify it.
You can continue with your comments.
Okay. Are you aware there is a DEP investigation into the very same matter?
You can continue with your comments.
Are you aware there's an MCUA investigation into the very same matter? Because you spoke to some outcome of an investigation I didn't know existed, but there's two other investigations, and I believe those two agencies are working together, and I'm working with them, and I haven't heard any kind of outcome there. So I'd ask that you go back to whoever your source is and find out if they're aware of these other investigations, because I'm very concerned that Robert Wood Johnson had city workers haul medical waste illegally and dump it illegally in the Middlesex County landfill. Can you confirm that PIAH was investigating the allegations of illegal child labor at the Department of Public Works last week? PIAH being the public employee's version of OSHA.
You keep looking for a comment for me during this. You can continue with yours, I'm making notes. You're not going to get an answer tonight on this.
Okay, well, then I'll take the answer when I can get it. I just, you know, I've been coming to these meetings for, you know, over a decade now, and, you know, the way it used to work was you could have a dialogue, and as I've expressed, it worked better that way.
Yes.
And I think the public deserves answers, and shouldn't have to come to two meetings to get answers. We should be able to get them right away, especially.
And again, if it's something that requires an immediate answer, and you feel the establishment of a concern, you can reach out to the appropriate parties, and you don't have to wait in between meetings to get answers. But I will get, you know, answers to things that I have to.
Okay. It's been almost 10 years since the New Brunswick Water Utility got in trouble for lying about the quality of the drinking water. A man, Ed O'Rourke, was imprisoned for that crime, and the city was fined, over $300,000. Has the city paid that fine yet?
You keep asking.
I do, I pause, because I want, I would like to respond.
I'll keep saying the same thing. This is a comments section only.
Okay. Doesn't have to be. I know the water director's here, he probably knows the answer. Madam Chair, through you for the water director, can he tell us?
No.
If the fine's been paid. No, you're preventing him from answering the question. Understood, okay. Yeah, I just think this is obstructionist, and we deserve better. On the point about the shooting and murder on September 12th, that the city broke its promise and didn't alert the community, I can draw your attention to the page of the city website, where a Tap Into New Brunswick article is published that says the city, going forward, is going to start to share information about shootings in public places with the public on its social media channels. And I'd ask that if that's not true, and you're going to break that promise, you remove that statement from your website. It's there. There was a shooting. It was in a public park. It was in the middle of the day. The city didn't publicize it. New Brunswick today publicized it. And then finally, just speaking as a resident on this one, I'm deeply concerned about the Woodbridge Power Plant, and I would ask you to heed the advice of your environmental commission.
Thanks, Mr. Cradville.
And pass a resolution opposing it. Join the seven towns that are against it.
Thank you. Charlie Cradville, I'll have the next speaker, please.
Hi, Brittany Richardson. Unfortunately, a resident of New Brunswick, Livingston Avenue. It's nice to hear that you guys are taking Rutgers, I guess, seriously, and giving them some better equipment to be able to reach out to the police, or whatever for that matter. Unfortunately, you don't even do that for your own workers. If something happens with us, we don't get to call the police, we got to use our cellphone that we're not supposed to use. If we get attacked by residents or anything like that, because not everybody is so nice, and we have to wait, what, an hour for the police to get there, and then nothing is done, and then the city punishes their worker instead of the resident. So let me give you an example. You guys waste the police time and our time. When I say our, the Department of Public Waste, specifically sanitation, because nine times out of 10, we're usually having to pick up homeless. You guys will wait for the homeless to leave, and you have us go and collect all of their things, whatever they have out, their food, or whatever, they have nowhere to go, but you have us pick it up and throw everything that they might have gotten from these resource centers in the trash. So, you know, of course, that would piss somebody off, that's all their belongings, and then you have us pick it up with a police officer present, but the police is not, they can't watch us 24 hours a day while we're working on a garbage truck. You know, we do have a lot of people that have gotten hit, sanitation workers that have got hit by cars. That's been going on for years. I haven't seen the city do anything for their workers to protect us, or at least let the police know. They don't know, because we don't have any way to reach out to them. You know, I'm responding to a comment that I heard about the ambulance responding slowly. You guys shut down downtown area for, you know, your little fun eating out, or whatever the case may be. But, you know, when we're picking up garbage, and there's may possibly be an emergency situation, where are they going to go? If we're picking up garbage in the middle of the street, you guys hire all these people to work for New Brunswick Parking Authority, they're supposed to be given tickets with illegal parking, you know, because somebody decides, hey, I want to park my car and get coffee and block up the street, the garbage truck can't pull over, and one of your police officers had the nerve to tell my supervisor that he had to get a ticket for blocking the street. How are we supposed to pull over if everything downtown is blocked? We have no way to pull over the garbage truck to collect the garbage that you have us picking up downtown seven days a week? That happens at no other city, where their downtown area picks up their garbage seven days a week, and the garbage does not get lighter. It's heavy every day, those businesses, the garbage is so heavy, it's breaking the tipper cans, because the food is so heavy in the garbage cans. That's why there's garbage blown, a part of the reason why garbage is blown in the streets. You know, it's making me sick to my stomach that I'm driving up and down the street, and I see the Cahill signs with all of your names on them for people to vote for you, which I hope doesn't happen, because if you can't handle something as simple as your garbage, or the workers that work for the city, that do the most service for the city, we're out here in all inclement times of weather, and you don't pay us, you know what I mean? I can only imagine how you'll handle a lot of these residents and their complaints and their concerns, you're not even handling your, something as simple as the garbage. So I'm pretty sure you don't care about what they have going on either. And it's really sad to see the same thing every meeting, and, you know, the nasty attitudes, you don't want to answer, you don't know anything. It's just a shame, the public deserves better.
Thank you. I'll have the next speaker, please. Anybody else have a comment? Seeing none?
If I may say something real quick before we finish, I just want to, there was a question about the council's post, opinion on reproductive rights of the plant. I will not speak for the council, but I will speak for myself. As a resident of New Brunswick, as a woman, I believe in reproductive rights, and also I am opposed to the plan that is going into the Woodbridge. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar?